Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an interior republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the 12/12/12 meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Kind of cool, huh? Never say that again. December 12th. Mr. Williams, you have the dog today?
Okay, well, we have a hyper dog here today, American Bulldog. She is how old?
A year old.
A year old. Great dog. I was at the dog kennel yesterday and loves to play and everything. We have 24 dogs in the kennels right now. Want to thank the workers at the kennel for getting rid of a lot of our dogs over the last couple of weeks, but please come out, adopt one of them.
I think she likes you. I think you have to come get her. Couldn't name her Pinky.
Today we'll have two presentations, one at 9:40 Raider Soccer Team and 9:45 the Developmental Disabilities levy request, unless you'd like to do that now.
We could do that now if you want.
So, we'll do the Raiders team first?
Yep.
Okay. Murray Ridge Soccer Team in 2012 was the fifth season for the team playing five-aside soccer. The team competes under the auspice of Special Olympics Ohio. 2011 was the first season the team won the state title at the Ohio Summer Games held on the campus of the Ohio State University. In 2012, they repeated as state champions. In 2012, the Raiders finished the regular season undefeated with 10 victories! Woo! They had three wins over Lake County DD, two wins against Cuyahoga County DD, and wins against Sandusky County, Lucas County, Portage County, Medina County, and Henry County. At the Ohio Summer Games, they defeated Montgomery County in the semifinals 4-2, and in the championship game, they beat Medina County 9-0. B.J. Winkelman has been the head coach since the team's inception. He has been ably assisted by Michelle Miller for the past four seasons. So, if you guys want to come up when I call your name, Eric Bryner, you just can come up right up here because we're probably going to want to get a picture of you. Eric Bryner, age 28, lives in Illyria with his third season and he plays defense. Good job. Victor Elder, age 28, lives in Lorraine. This was his third season and he also plays defense. Ryan Eliason, age 24, lives in Grafton, and this was his fourth season and he plays offense. Jeremy Foster, age 21, lives in Grafton with his first season and he plays defense and Carl Jeans, age 39, lives in Lorraine, and this was his fourth season and he plays offense. Eric Johnson, age 45, lives in Illyria, and this was his fifth season as goalkeeper. Demetrius, also known as DJ Overall, age 25, lives in Illyria, and this was his fourth season and he plays offense. Angel Rivera, age 22, lives in Lorraine, and this was his third season and he plays defense. Christopher Summer, age 28, lives in Vermillion, and this was his fifth season and he plays defense. Did we miss anybody? And Mr. Winkelman and Michelle Miller, if you want to come up with your team? Let's give them all a big hand, everybody. Do we also have recognitions if we want to give them to each of the players? Thank you. If either one of the coaches want to say something or any of the students?
These guys, they start.
If you can go to that microphone right there so everybody can hear you, it'd be great. Thank you.
These guys, they start every year real early in April. A lot of times, it's rain, frozen ground. We're outside. Couple of weeks later, it's scorching hot, and these guys work really hard. And we were there a couple of years, and we just miss qualifying for the championship or we lose in the championship. And so, it was just nice to see these guys finally get some championships.
All right. Nice job. Thank you for doing what you guys do. Did you guys get enough? Did you get pictures?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I was wondering if they play basketball. The Cavaliers could use some help.
Yeah.
Not after last night, what they did to Kobe and crew.
Yeah. Like 100 to 94 or something?
100 to 94.
Yeah. Okay. I'm glad you're wearing red, like you fit in with the team today.
That's right. And it fits the season.
Yes, it does.
Well, I'd just like to start by thanking the entire Board of County Commissioners for its ongoing support and celebration of Lorraine County residents with developmental disabilities. It means a great deal to us, and things like today are very, very special and life-changing. Murray Ridge Center provides lifelong services to about 2,000 infants, children, adults, and seniors with developmental disabilities. When you think about the importance and the value of these services to the families of eligible individuals, Murray Ridge Center directly benefits many additional thousands of Lorraine County residents. Also, we're a major employer in the county, providing jobs for hundreds of local residents. Just a brief overview of the continuum of services provided by Murray Ridge Center includes our early intervention program where we serve, provide critically important interventions to infants and toddlers with developmental delays. This program has been growing at an unprecedented rate, and it's supported almost entirely with local levy dollars. Our school serves Lorraine County residents with the most significant disabilities and behavioral and medical challenges. Our adult program operates five days a week. We have three centers throughout the county serving nearly 750 individuals with developmental disabilities. These services are not only the only, one of the only opportunities for socialization, skills development, and vocational opportunities for adults, but they're also critically important to the families of these individuals, many of whom are aging or have working family members who are able to go to work or get a necessary break because of our adult programs. We provide extensive community employment services to hundreds of adults with developmental disabilities. We also provide residential services and fund residential services provided by private providers throughout the community. Although most adults with developmental disabilities do live in the family home, hundreds of adults are, who maybe have no family caregivers or very aged family caregivers, do live in residential settings, and Murray Ridge Center needs to provide the funding for that care. We also provide family support services to many hundreds of families throughout Lorraine County, and this provides limited funding that helps the family provide the care in the family home, again, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars for the taxpayers. Also, we provide investigation of any incidents or allegations of abuse or neglect of individuals with developmental disabilities, and our Service and Support Administration Department provides information, referral, and service coordination. So, as you can see, it's a very important continuum of services for these vulnerable individuals. Our 1.6875 mils levy that expires on December 31st, 2013, represents about 24% of the agency's revenue. Because we use those dollars to pull down federal dollars, if we were to lose them, we would need to cut back more than a fourth of the agency's programs. I really appreciate the time that each of the Commissioners took to meet with us prior to today's meeting and understand our sustainability concerns and also the extensive measures that we've taken over the past four years and beyond. We have engaged at Murray Ridge Center in a very, very intense austerity program. We, within an already very efficient and frugal operation, have taken every opportunity to capture additional efficiencies, pull in additional federal revenue where we can, and fortunately, to date, we've been able to sustain all of the major programs of Murray Ridge Center. But we are very concerned because of additional losses of revenue. The tangible personal property tax, hold harmless dollars that will be disappearing and began to be phased out last year in particular are of concern. We will be losing $1.2 million per year in revenue from that funding stream alone, and that only just began, and additional phase outs are going to occur within the next couple of years. So, today, our request to put a 1.6875 mils five-year replacement levy on the May 7th, 2013 ballot is truly a request to preserve essential services for Lorraine County residents and particularly Lorraine County children with developmental disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Did you have something to say?
Well, no, I just want to thank you for taking the time to go through. This organization has a special place in my heart on it, and what I really enjoyed when sitting down with you and your group was actually looking at the financial part of it, too. No doubt about it, you guys are dedicated to the program.
Thank you.
But you're looking at, you know, four, five years out. You're really doing a great job with your budget.
Thank you.
And planning on worst-case scenarios, and that is something that I was glad to see on that.
Thank you.
And I do believe that you do make the Lorraine County a better community by the services you provide, by the individuals here, with the teamwork that you're creating, and all the other events that go on. And I just want you to know you have my full support for that levy.
Thank you so much. That's, that means a lot to us. Thank you.
You do a fine job, Dr. Fisher. Great organization. You always have been. You run it tight. You've got a great board.
Yes, we do.
So, you know.
Thank you so much.
Fine job, everybody works for all the employees. It's an inspiring place to go to.
Yes. Yeah. Visited it, watched the workshops and things that you do there. It's, it's very nice, and like when we talked, I said, "Where else would these people have to go if Murray Ridge was not, you know, around?" So, we're glad that you're here and you do such a great job.
Thank you so much.
Sounds like you've got full support of this board, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you so very much, and happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Merry Christmas.
Would you like to make a motion to?
I would make a motion to, does it got to go to Mark Stewart first or straight on ballot?
Well, I'll go get another certificate, then I get to take it to the Board of Elections. So, I need a resolution to approve the five-year replacement of 1.6875 mils for the Developmental Disabilities levy.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Here you go.
Thank you.
You're all set. Thank you.
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Advances, repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
No requisitions, travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under the Auditor, authorize said appropriation transfers that were entered by the Auditor's Office in 2012 between personal services and other categories as per the Auditor's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do request, which I hope is a brief executive session, to discuss matters of ongoing bargaining and do a personnel action at Golden Acres and one in the Commissioners' office, and those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Law for executive session, as executive session discussion, so it acts as a conclusion of our regular board meeting today. We go into executive session and talk about those issues. Thank you.
Do we have another one? I thought we had an email for executive session with someone as well.
I don't know what the issue is. I'm assuming that...
Sheriff? You're coming, Sheriff's coming in for something?
He is, but I don't know what the issue is, so I can't tell you what the issue is with regard to the Sheriff's, but I'm assuming it fits the definition of executive session.
Approve waiver being the same in the County Commissioners' meeting minutes of December 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Except the amounts and rates as determined by Budget Commission in authorizing the necessary tax levies and certify them to the County Auditor. These are revised taxes to give replacement with a decreased levy passed and moving inside millage.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo? Under Community Development, approve an intern contract with Donal B. Eager and Associates LLC Lancaster to provide for fair housing services and compliance with CDVG FY12 effective retroactive December 1st, 2012 through August 31st, 2013, in the amount not to exceed $10,000 to be paid from the fair housing account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I do have just one thing to add, Teresa. We're short one person on our fair housing board. We need to fill the position. Is that up on our website or can we get it put up there? If anyone interested in serving on the fair housing board, there's some requirements. We're taking applications to fill that seat.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under 911, approve an interim professional service agreement with Exact 911 Limited, Charne, Ohio, to furnish professional information technology services for Lorraine County commencing on or after December 1st, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under Transit, approve an interim agreement with City of Overland to provide connector and modified fixed route transportation services two days per week for seven hours of service effective January 2nd, 2013 through December 26, 2013. City will provide the county with local funds in the amount of $40 per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, accept petition filed on November 30, 2012 from Brighton Township Trustees to clean and repair 1,080 linear feet fail tile from roadway to field tile, the outlet from Gore Offshore and Road Covert 779. Viewing will be on January 15 at 10:00. Hearing will be held January 30 at 9:45 and notice be placed in the Chronicle.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Hopefully, it won't snow and be muddy that day. But I'm trying.
Yeah, I was just thinking that. I hope it's not a blizzard.
Mr. Cordez, County Minister.
I don't have any additional comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Anis, Assistant County Prosecutor.
If we're going to have an executive session, I can update you on one matter of pending litigation, very short.
Commissioners' report.
I just want to remind everybody that your dog licenses are due by the end of December. They are $12 for seniors and $14 for the rest of us, and also, $5 can, you can purchase a heart-shaped tag, which is called the Stan Siniger Medical Fund, which goes for treating sick and injured dogs and maybe the spay neuter program out of that, too. There's that, might not be part of that, but anyways, so make sure you get that done. If you don't do it by the end of December, oh, is it January 31st? I thought it was December 31st. Well, you can get it in now because you can start getting it now if you want, but after January 31st, the cost of the licenses double, and that's not our rule. It's the higher revised code, so want to make sure you get it done in time. The other thing is, we got a press release from our Solid Waste Department regarding Christmas trees. I know Christmas isn't here yet, but they will have a collection for those, starting December 26 and ending January 31st. You can bring them in on Monday, noon to 6:00, Wednesday, noon to 6:00, and Saturday, 9:00 to 6:00 at our Collection Center. If you have any questions, you can contact our Solid Waste Department, Keith Bailey, at This past Friday, I had our N-RAC meeting, and we had three applicants for the Conservation for Green Space. One was the City of Bellevue, one was Lorraine County Metro Parks, and also for Medina County Park District. We still have a balance of $362,000 left over that can still be used, so if there's anybody out there that qualifies, you can check the Ohio Department of Development to find out how to apply for, to conserve our green space here in Lorraine County. We had a Christmas party last night, and the funniest thing, I think this word is going to stick, for Ted Calo, they called him the "Noahca-holic." "Noahca-holic," I thought that was the funniest term ever used, so.
It takes up a lot of my time.
Because he goes to, he goes to Noahca and he goes to Columbus, and he's not only a Commissioner here, but he's also a Commissioner in Franklin County because he's there so much, but when they said "noahca-holic," I thought that was a keeper phrase for Ted, so.
Well, between yesterday afternoon and all this morning, that's about all I've been talking.
I'm sure. And I believe, is it end of my report?
Yeah. We also had on Friday Commissioner Kousi and I serve on Ohio Public Works Commission. We had our meeting in Carlisle with the participating counties and Senator Projects down for the next round of funding. Also attended Ray Noble, very involved in American Cancer Society, and he served the Man-to-Man Prostate Cancer Support Group. They had their Christmas party. Myself, Sheriff Stomidi was there, Matt Lundie was there, elected Tim Williams, Eddie Edwards from Lorraine, and nice turnout, nice support. It's a great group, and they really take care of each other. Saturday night, Commissioner Williams and I attended the 4-H Gala for Enzo Lorraine County Junior Fair. I got down to the 15th.
Oh.
I didn't quite make it for the reverse raffle, but they ended up having a very nice turnout. I hope they did well, because we'll be talking about that and budget issues next week on funding levels. Also, Sunday and Monday was the County Commissioners Association annual meetings. I was done on Sunday and Monday. I didn't stick around for Tuesday. I don't know if Commissioner Williams did or not because I had to get back over budget. Lot of great discussion points. There's been a major change in Commissioners statewide. 62 of them are no longer there, either retired or lost election, so we had our meet with the new ones on Sunday evening. Lot of different viewpoints as how county government should run, so that was interesting. We also had, went to a session on the Ohio Health and Transformation. It looks like they're trying to figure out how they're going to handle Medicaid and all the entitlement issues and going forward in regards to the Affordable Care Act. Also, had a session with the EPA, a lot of the questions in regards to solid waste districts. The gentleman running it is very forthright in the issues he thinks he needs dealt with, but he said he started a lot of talking issues that have made people stand on ears, like combining all the districts, but those are all for discussions. He wants to hear the arguments for and against that. We also had our general session that dealt with all of our legislative issues. Actually, it looks like 911, the wireless fee, it was reduced by 10% from 28 cents per cellphone per month to help fund 911s and PSAPs down to 25 cents, but it is going to be permanent, which helps with, you know, going forward on making all of our Phase 2s, Phase 3s, and all those crazy issues we have to take care of. What else did we do down there? Oh, new incoming president, Gary Lee from Union County. He's asked me to serve one more time, so I would ask the Board next month that organizational, be our representative of CCAO again. Just a busy week.
I thought you were winding down.
Yeah, I am. And then Noahca discussion, because Nomination Committee is this Friday morning at 8:30, so I've been discussing pros and cons with everyone and bylaw issues. And I also spoke with Matt Lundie this morning on the Turnpike. The Governor is supposed to release his decision tomorrow on how he wants to go forward. It looks like he's going to move it around, but not privatize it by leasing or selling it, is what we're hoping. I did get clarification on the issue, though. Remember, we talked about, it didn't go back to state legislature for approval. The RFP would go back to be designed. KMPG comes out with a study, Governor approves it. He sent it to the, he would then send to the state legislature if he was going to sell or lease.
Correct.
The legislature approves the RFP. When it goes out, though, the Governor has final signature on what he accepts. It wouldn't go back to the state legislature. I did get clarification on that legislation they changed last year.
Yeah, it's under Ohio Revised Code Section 126.60.
Right, that was the new one they did. They changed it, so they gave the Governor the ability to sign the contract. So, but it looks like you've not left a message for Ed Fitzgerald to see what our response is going to be once we know or how we're going to respond from our 13-county bipartisan coalition in regards to how the money's going to be distributed, hopefully, you know, at least two-thirds to the contiguous Turnpikes counties, so we'll see how that goes. I think that was all. Done.
I was at the Commissioners Association meetings as well. I did stay for Tuesday, went to an early meeting, met with a lot of the different Commissioners down there, talking about different ways of running county government, a lot of good ideas, individuals who are retiring after 20, 30 years. Got to speak with them at the dinner and just give me their views, so it was very interesting. Seminars, you learn some stuff, but really, it's at the dinners when you get to meet with all the different Commissioners, where you pick up different trades on how they're doing it. The newer Commissioners coming in, very energetic group, a lot of good ideas. I wish them a lot of luck on what they want to implement, because one thing that we are learning is we cannot run government the way it's always been ran. We do have to make changes in order to stay ahead of the game. What was it, the, oh, regarding the Turnpike, they said at least 50% would be coming back. Don't know where, if that's going to go to the general fund, if it's going to go to projects in the area as far as ODOT. Looking forward to the report. I know you didn't make the lunch, but he said that would be released to the county, the Governor said, it would be released to the county engineers for them to review and to the Commissioners, so hopefully, when that comes out at the end of the week, we'll get a copy.
Tomorrow, actually, tomorrow, it was in the dispatch this morning, and they have comments from people who's already prepped. And what the, nobody, it was all anonymity, nobody would give their name as to, but Bachelor did comment that it wouldn't be privatized, so that was his comment in Columbus Dispatch this morning. So, that's why it started the phone calls around the state already. So, it should be out tomorrow, and he'll be promoting his plan, and we just have to press for as many dollars as possible.
I agree.
For us, we do have the most interchanges in the state of Ohio, so I would say we should get the bulk of the money. I don't know how everybody else feels, but that's what I think.
Well, you know what? We're in agreement, because when we had the, when I had the ODOT project manager here, I was telling him on the same thing, that we need to look at the number of interchanges on the Turnpike. Wes, having six of them, the majority of the money should come here, and really, it comes down to the details in the lease and what the funding's going to be as far as if I'm going to be for it or against it.
Well, not a lease. It's not a lease, it looks like it's going to be held and managed.
Held and managed?
By ODOT would actually be the oversight, but they haven't talked about they're going to eliminate the Turnpike Board. Dispatch had a nice article on it this morning based on comments that were made yesterday.
Why are they still talking about leasing the actual plazas?
No, that's, I'll say, that's off of the Turnpike now. I guess that's going to be like the 71s and 75s, they want to privatize.
Well, he did mention that, the governor, but there was also mention about possibly leasing the Turnpike plazas.
Well, don't they do that now? That's what all private sectors in there.
Yeah, actually having a managing group take over.
Okay, I hadn't heard that.
It was just something I heard down in the commissioners' meeting, so. Noahca we have coming up on Friday. I was at the Amherst Township Association meeting last night. Just went out there to meet the residency, what type of issues they've had. One of the concerns again is the sale or of Golden Acres. We've been going back and forth on this issue. I was just wondering what the board thought. You know, are we still looking at selling Golden Acres, or is it going to be removed?
I have no intent on selling the facility.
The corner lot?
The corner lots would be wonderful, the itself, we can generate cash flow.
So the sale of Golden Acres is off the table?
I don't have any intentions of selling the place, no.
Okay. It was just different. I think that's important to get out to the community that it's not going to be sold. That was one of the questions, so. Trying to look here. Oh, the issue came up with the dog kennel, our dog kennel. One of the things we do, we have the Dog of the Week here. It airs on Saturdays, and the adoption is, you can go down there if you, first one there, by 3 o'clock, you can adopt a dog. This doesn't get aired until noon, I believe, this tape. Well, you have individuals that get there at 10:00 a.m., they'll wait five hours to adopt a dog. Or the person that's watched it and goes down there will actually miss out on the adoption of the Dog of the Week. I think we may want to go through and take a look at our policies for the kennel as far as changing it, how we do the adoptions. I think one of the things, it's silly to have somebody who's there to wait, to adopt a dog, have to wait five hours if they plan on adopting a dog.
Right.
So you want to quit showing the dogs here, then?
No, no, this, I, he mentioned that to me yesterday, and I talked to Mr. Cortez about it. It's just a policy change. Back when we first started doing this, it was aired at 10, or aired at noon, and then we gave the people a chance to go get the dog. Well, we used to have a lottery, if there was more than one person interested in the dog, that we would have a lottery to adopt that dog. But now, it's on a first-come, first-served basis, so it doesn't make any sense to hold the dog. Actually, after the three days are up, we can just put it up for adoption and not have to wait till Saturday even, because it is a first-come, first-served. So if Mr. Cortez, if you could just make that policy change, because it no longer makes sense to hold the dog, and people can just call and make sure the dog is still available, or, you know, we don't want to be like false advertising, a dog's going to for sure be there.
As we discussed, my recommendation is that, and our good friend Hal is in the back listening, that we change the announcement on the website. Hal does a great job putting up the information with regard to the dog that's featured each week. We just need to indicate, please call ahead of time at the number for the kennel and ensure that the dog is still available for adoption before you come in. I think that should alleviate any problems. The issue was actually first brought up when somebody would arrive, and the potential pet was already adopted out, and then they got mad, and they would call you guys up and et cetera. And then we went to the lottery system, and after much problems with the lottery system, we decided to do away with the lottery, because it ended up being quite a ruckus. And then we went to first-come, first-served, and then people were pitching tents out in front of the kennel in the parking lot. And so, you know, every time we solve a problem, we create additional situations that need to be addressed. So I think that'll work out very, very well, and I'll issue those instructions after the meeting.
So we don't even have to wait the full, till Saturday even. We can, as soon as it's available, it's available. So they don't have to stay there any longer than they have to.
I'm just wondering, would we want to, even instead of having the dog come in here, this is just a talking point, would it be better to have, because they do take a picture of all the dogs in the kennels, is actually show a picture on our weekly broadcast of all the dogs that are available for adoption? And that way, people could see all the dogs are there.
Well, they can, I used to say all the time, you can check our website, and hopefully, I mean, I've caught a lot of times where they're not putting all the dogs, they're not all up and available for viewing. So I think, I don't want to change what we're doing. I think what we're doing has worked, and it's got the message out there that we need help, and people think of the dog pound when they want to adopt a pet.
Again, I'm just looking at to, trying to get more dogs out there to get them adopted. The other thing I was wondering, we do have, I get a lot of complaints from my office, I'm sure you guys get complaints regarding the kennel. Some of the issues I get are Lorraine County residents having a hard time adopting dogs.
I've never.
And what it come, well, it's normally with some of the, I'll call them the more cute dogs that are available, where the dog comes available and the dog gets adopted out by somebody outside the county. What do you think of having a thing where Lorraine County residents could get a priority?
We had that at one time, Tom, and I, not to step on what you, we've been here, again, eight years. We had that at one point, and the problem was the cute ones, more desirable ones, would sit there until a Lorraine County person showed up, when a rescue would have gotten that dog out sooner. Or we ended up with the less desirable dogs were the only ones that were left there that the rescues really couldn't do anything with, and our euthanasia went up. I mean, the process we're handling now, we're down to, I don't know our euthanizing number, next to nothing anymore.
Very, very low.
I mean, it was over 1,100 dogs when we got here, and the policy's changing. We're down, I mean, I don't think we hit 100 yet this year, have we?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, what I was hearing, thinking, there's a three-day holding period. But if someone would come in on the third day that's being held, and they would want to get it, and they're a Lorraine County resident, that they could actually put a deposit down, if the dog's not retrieved by its owner, then that resident could get that, get the dog. If not, Lorraine, if a rescue group came in on the fourth day, first day of the adoption availability, then they could adopt the dog. Again, I just, I hear stories from individuals that do take, the one gentleman was taking his grandson in there multiple times, and finally, he went through and got the dog from the APL. But he did try going through our kennel, was not able to get a dog.
Well, there's multiple avenues to get pets. I mean, we prefer everybody comes to the kennel first. But the APL has animals out there. I mean, the rescue groups, I mean, if they're looking for a specific breed, they can find them through the rescue groups. I mean, I think we've got it down. I mean, we've knocked it down from over 1,000 to less than 100 euthanizing.
Yeah.
I think we've done a good job.
I think we've done an excellent job.
And then the other one, just talking with some of the rescue people, pit bulls, they're not adopt, we can't, they can't adopt them if they live in Lorraine County. Normally, somebody outside the county or a rescue group. For rescue groups that are coming outside of the county to adopt pit bulls, they normally wait and see if another group is going to adopt a dog. What do you think about waiving the fee for pit bulls to rescue groups? Just to try to help the rescue groups, they're working with a limited dollar amount. We don't, we don't want the dogs here in Lorraine County. So if a rescue group's willing to come in and take the dog, you know, to allow it to go there, it gives them money?
How many pit bulls go out of county? And what is the ramifications on the dog kennel budget? Before we waive fees, I'd like to know how much they're going to lose.
Again, these are only talking points, Ted. I'm just bringing up some things. Again, we had a Dog Wardens Association down at the meeting, so I was talking with individuals down there about different ways they handle their dog kennel, so.
That's what it's about down there, networking, finding other ideas, without a doubt. Do it all the time.
So I don't know if you would be open to take a look, see what the numbers are for pit bulls, how many there are?
Find a dollar and cents. I would have to look at a budget number first on that. Because if they're being adopted out, and we're not euthanizing them, the pass on the revenue, when you don't have to, you know, I don't think is a smart way to go if they're being adopted out, if we're not euthanizing a ton of them, and they are coming in to get them, I don't think our fee is.
It's a very low adoption fee.
We don't charge much, so.
As we raised all other fees, we reduced the adoption fee, so it makes it easier for people to adopt, or more affordable for people to adopt. And as far as the Lorraine County resident having preference, I really don't want to alienate our rescue groups.
Oh, no way, they do a great job on it.
Exactly. I mean, they step up to the plate every time we get full, they're there, and they're pulling dogs left and right. Like, last weekend, was it 23 dogs or something in one weekend? So if we didn't have the rescue groups, we'd be putting down a lot more dogs. So I don't want to, you know, make them feel like slighted at all in any ways, shape or form.
I'm friends with a lot of them on Facebook, and I see every time the kennel's getting full, they're putting out the messages.
Yep. Between rescues and workers, and, I mean, we have a lot of good people helping us there.
Our workers do a great job as far as getting the message out when the kennel does get full. Again, just looking at different ways down there, people brought up different ways they handle their dog kennel. So just bringing it back here to share, to see if there's any way you would like to investigate it. But I'll look at the numbers. I'll work with Jack, try to get the numbers on that. And then the, last thing I wanted to bring up actually is Councilman Dennis Flores, City of Lorraine, he's getting hit with a transparency issue. I don't know if you read in the newspapers, Law Director Riley is, you know, wanted to prosecute him for saying something, and that occurred in the executive session. And it came about because it was regarding the Amherst sewers. It was back in September, a meeting, and what happened was the residents of Amherst Township, they wanted to go to the meeting. They put requests in, they looked at the agenda. At 5 o'clock, it wasn't on the agenda, so they didn't attend the city council meeting. City council went in, they voted to waive their 72-hour rule. They had discussions on their, for the mayor's point, and they came back and voted on it. The, Dennis Flores, I sent him a text, and I said, Dennis, why did this come up? You know, people wanted to attend the meeting. He stated that they voted to eliminate, or to bypass the 72-hour rule.
They do that almost every week.
Right. And that came up in executive session, which, Jerry, I don't think that's executive session material, correct?
I've never served on a city council, so I'm kind of.
I'm not going to comment on what Lorraine City does.
It was basically to waive a 72-hour rule. There was no executive session information that was passed on to me about it. And I just wanted to clear that up, because Riley was talking about having the chief of police investigate him, and I think it's being over, just, I'll grandstand, or whatever you want to call it, on their part, you know, witch hunt. Mr. Flores just answered a question. I had residents asking me why it wasn't on agenda. He told me that. And, you know, transparency is very important to government. I was actually at the White House website, and the president was talking about transparency and how important it is to get the public, the citizens, involved in government, and how it builds their trust and makes for better government. And I just want, want the people to know that, one, Mr. Flores did not go against the executive policy. He did not share executive session information. And if anyone has any questions on that, feel free to give me a call, and I'll set the record straight on that. End of my report.
Well, I attended CCAO as well, and I was nominated and elected Secretary of County Commissioners, Clerks, Engineers, and Professionals.
You don't have enough to do.
And also the Northeast District Rep.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You got a good girl.
Board of Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Public comment?
We missed you, David.
I missed you, too.
Morning Commissioners, David Ashenhurst Oberlin. I've developed four questions or clarifications regarding the Commissioner's report. I had nothing before that.
That'll teach us to talk and be transparent.
Well, let me do the fourth one first. Just a comment that a lot of us are looking at the issue going on in Lorraine and with Lorraine City Council, and I've spoken to Councilman Flores about it as well. And I think the first question is going to be whether the City of Lorraine's policy has any connection to the responsibilities of public officials under open meetings rules. There, you can't, I mean, the newspapers have pointed out that you can't put a gag order on people for what's discussed in executive session. There's the citation in the, in the thing that the City of Lorraine people have to file, which, or, public officials have to file, which was put on the website for the Morning Journal, is referencing a thing that's used to make it so that you don't disclose trade secrets gleaned in the course of your duties as a public official about contracts and things like that. It has nothing to do with what they're citing in the open meetings thing, and I think that's going to turn out in other ways. But we'll certainly watch that, and the fact is, whether Councilman Flores disclosed something or not, especially if the topic was not appropriate for executive session, which although your council will not say it, I mean, you can immediately look at the things that are appropriate for executive session and what, and voting on a 72-hour rule doesn't come under those things, those exceptions under the public, open meetings rules anyway. So that was not what I really wanted to come up here and talk about. First question.
But you did.
But I did.
Shirley's taught him a lot over the years.
The first is a couple of clarifications. First, although the Turnpike service plazas are not privatized, they are, and they are not subject to leased, but they are subject to a sort of a franchise arrangement, are they not?
Along those lines, I don't know in depth. That's why when he brought it up, I think it's already, they're locked in long-term, because they put the improvements into those facilities, you know, leasehold improvements to build at a McDonald's or a Panera, or whatever they might be, or a Hardee's, so. I don't know, but I have heard talk about privatizing the ones on the offroads.
Yeah, but I think the point there is that there is a, there are leases with private concerns for those spaces, but they themselves still belong to the Turnpike, and the possibility is just spinning them off so that the whole thing is private rather than the leasehold improvements within the service areas. Second is a clarification, and actually, I'm going to put Commissioner Kalo a little on the spot. You said you were not interested at all in selling the Golden Acres facility. Is there any possibility in selling the beds?
I have no interest in selling the beds. And we've been offered bed money all the time, but nobody wants the facility, David. We'd be stuck with an old antiquated facility. It'd be sort of like having our courthouse all over, no money for improvements.
I understand. I do understand that, but I guess what I'm asking is, the, selling the permits for the beds and not using the beds in Golden Acres anymore, is, I gather, one of the things that's been talked about. So you're not interested in any other operator having some or all of those beds?
No, I'm very comfortable the way we're operating it. We had a bad year last year because of reimbursement rates, but we'll adjust that and keep it in the black, and there are reserves, and we do have these shortfalls, and I, it gives another alternative for, you know, care, so.
Okay. And the last is a clarification about the dog kennel discussion that was going on up there. I was a little curious how the lottery had developed into a ruckus, and I also wanted to ask how the current policy on first-come, first-served does not result in people pitching tents maybe on Thursday instead of on Saturday. So I just wanted a clarification on how that was avoided by a different first-come, first-served than was available, and what does happen when a cute dog is up there?
They can pitch a tent. They'll pitch a tent, I'm sure.
They still will pitch a tent?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm also, I, just, Commissioner Williams, I think everybody's on tight budgets, so I'm certainly for not giving a pass to people outside the county on any specific dog and just leaving that alone. Saying, everybody would like to have their fee waived, and I think if you start waiving fees, there are going to be a lot of people here who would like their fees waived as well, so.
Yeah, I was just looking at for rescue groups, because they have such a limited amount of dogs. Instead of euthanizing a dog, you know, we could actually go through and waive that. You do, what I did see was at the kennel yesterday, a person actually bought, paid for the fees, and anyone that wanted a dog could actually just go and get the dog for free. So there are some organizations that do it.
It's fine if somebody else is paying the fee, but I think the county not waiving it is a good principle.
I did.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Seeing none, I move we go into executive session as outlined by the Administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor. Did you second?
Second.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue. Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Aliria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving 13 counties, secure and safe Ohio rideshare, makes it easy to connect with carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site.